Well, welcome back to Knowledge is Power Podcast. And we're podcasting this stuff live today. It is so good to start all over again. How you guys doing? And if you see me here and we're going live, we're live right now. Hit me with a comment. Let's, let's see who's here, who's not, who's presence. So tonight I'm gonna have a special guest. And, and every Tuesday of this month, I'll be introducing you to the candidates that are running for election, local candidates that are running for election in the November the 3rd election. So that's gonna be good. So we're, we're gonna have a tram, a slot for every candidate that is running for election in November, for November the 3rd election. So thank you for watching. Thank you for being here. It's been a while. I didn't, I didn't show up on Sunday. You know why? Because I would watch those slugs play, I mean, those cowboys play on Sunday. So I, um, I kind of, I don't want to compete with that audience. So we, I, I didn't postpone that show. But tonight we've got a guest, my special guest. Hello, D Mac Holden. Good to see you. How you doing? Great, great to have you. And I'm, I'm glad you're one of my favorite viewers. So anytime, send me a, a, a comment and we'll go from there. Tonight, my special guest is Jefferson County Commissioner, Precinct One Right-In Candidate, Marinette Landry Parkinson. That's right. Mary Ann is, Marinette is running for election for the precinct one. And she's a right-in. So it's gonna be some instructions you're gonna need to know when you go to the polls. And, but first of all, before we go any further, let me introduce you to my co-host, Donna, Donna Sherwood. Hello, Donna.
How are you? I'm so excited.
Yes, you always excited, yes. Excuse me. So, um, how you been?
I'm good. I am excited about Marinette because she's one of my favorite people and I just like her. So I'm super excited to be on today. And I'm kind of happy that we're not getting hurricanes. And so I'm here for all of that right now.
Yeah, that, that be, I am, we are so blessed that we missed that, that hurricane. I mean, it tilted to the east and, and we ducked and dodged that one. Thank God. I'm so glad that we didn't get a chance to do that. So what else going on in, in, in the city before we get started with Ms. Marinette?
Well, right now we are doing the Get Out the Vote initiative. And we are trying to make sure that people are registered to vote. Um, census is coming to an end and the Southeast Texas Democrats, we want to make sure that everybody is registered and that we are doing our part to get people registered to vote so that when early voting happens, we are not looking stupid at the polls. Let me tell you how important voting is. Voting is super important. Your vote matters. We only have two powers, voting power and buying power. And if we don't exercise those two, we are in poor shape.
That's right. You're absolutely right. No, 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 no joke. You are right. Um, but that brings me to next Sunday's show. Next Sunday's show, I'm gonna have some, we're gonna be, the topic gonna be Get Out the Vote. And volunteers, we need volunteers, we need everything. The Jefferson County Democratic Headquarters is open Mondays, Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays from 2 to 6 o'clock. So if you need any yard signs, bumper stickers, whatever you need for all your candidates, you can find that material at the Jefferson County Democratic Headquarters on, at, on Calder Street. That's 2211 Calder Street. Again, it is open every day, Mondays, Tuesdays, Wednesday, and Friday from 2 to 6. So make sure you, you visit the Jefferson County Democratic Headquarters and pick up your product, your material on the candidates, yard signs, and whatever you have to need, we have. What else do we have? Also, you can do your 2020 census there as well. And also you can register vote there. And someone is gonna be there, someone's gonna be answering the phones. You don't have to worry about it. And we're gonna have that place open on all elections, not just this general election, for all the elections. So make sure you, you visit and call if you have any questions. You can always call there from 2 to 6, Mondays, Wednesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. And we need volunteers there. We need volunteers. We need volunteers. If you're not doing anything for four hours, give them a call and say, hey, listen, I am open for this day. I can do four hours. We need someone to answer the phone. We need someone giving instructions and giving them information that is very important for this election. So please, 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 people, let's get involved. We have to vote. We've got to vote this year like we never voted before. Yes, we do have, we got to get, we got, we got to change the game here. Uh, with that said, let's bring our guest on tonight. Do I have any other announcement? I'll do it at the end because I want to make sure that I introduce everyone to all the candidates that are running in this election. And we're gonna give them a five-minute plug. Uh, and remember again, every candidate on every Tuesday will be here. And so that you can get to know who they are and cast your vote for that person. I will support them and I want you to support them. All right. Okay, let's bring our guest. Our guest is tonight is Marinette Landry Parkinson.
Hi, hi, how you doing?
We're good, Mary. It's good to have you here. And you have to, you know, I was thinking, I was talking to our Donna. And we were talking about how we had to, when it's gonna take, and I said, you know, I have, I, I, I need some talking points because I gotta produce this show. And I, and I'll take a lot of time just to make sure we produce the show so it'd be, it'd be more responsive. It'd be, it'd be a good show, it'd be good information that we can pass on. And I was just talking to her today and I said, wait a minute. That's good. We got to get Marinette. No, that was over the weekend. So we gotta get Marinette on here. So Marinette, you're the first candidate.
Thank you.
I don't know who it's gonna be next Tuesday, but we gotta make contact. You've got guests already here watching. We've got Terry Ross saying good evening to you. We've got, uh, Lydia Brown saying hello, hello, Lydia.
Hello.
We've got Terry, Tara, Grant, Tara, hey Tara. Grant is saying hello. We are here tonight and, um, it is so good to have you.
And we are super excited too. You are kicking off our candidate series, girl. Go ahead, you better remember.
Right, right, right.
I know I can talk, right?
Yeah, you sure can. I know that. Look, you know, I want to always let everybody know that when you're watching Knowledge is Power Podcast, I'd like for you to go to my page, Knowledge is Power Podcast Live on Facebook. And where you can find about, you can learn about your history, black history. You can learn about black health. Uh, you can learn about anything that you need to know about life, living family. Um, just basic things that is very important to the black community. Go to that page and like it and share it because that's, every day that's posted information on what's going on in the country, when in our black community all over the country. And also I love posting, I love, I'm a, I'm a great reader. I love reading. I'm a historic, black historic reader. And I love black history. And I'd like you to join me on those pages. I've got two of them. And join on me on those pages, Knowledge is Power Podcast page on, on Facebook. And learn about our black history, learn about things that our blacks invented, things that we, we didn't learn in school. Know your history. So I'm gonna share, I'm gonna continue to share that page with everyone that's, that's on Facebook. You have opportunity to learn a little bit about our heritage. And that is Knowledge is Power Podcast Live page, not my profile page. Cause you got to have, you gotta be tied down when you go to my profile.
You know what? I, I noticed that you shared the Knowledge is Power link on your personal page, but not on the Knowledge is Power post page. You need to do it on both, but anyway, we'll talk about that later.
Yeah, okay. I'm lost. Marinette, how you doing, love?
I am doing fabulous, believe it or not. Uh, I mean, during, during this pandemic, raising my kids. And I know you hear him talking because they don't care if I'm on. They don't care if I'm live, even though I gave the instructions not to talk. So I'm here, I'm ready for, and I'm ready to be the next Jefferson County Commissioner, Precinct One. So I, I will just throw it out there. I'm just ready.
That's the positive, that's the positive attitude I like to hear. I like to hear that energy. I'm ready to do this. I'm ready to do that. You can be, and you can be the best that you can be. And you could be the best of that there on the commissioner. So with that said, I'd like everybody to know before we get that Knowledge is Power Podcast Live is a platform to share information, very important information about educating the Southeast Texas African-American communities with viable information on health, education, local politics, business, personal finances, whatever. We've got it here at Knowledge is Power Podcast Live. Okay, Marinette, let's, 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 let's introduce yourself to the, to the audience. Let, let them know who you are and, and where you come from. I know you, I know you're born in here. And I want you born, you born and raised here in Beaumont, right?
I wasn't born here. My dad and my mom got married. Well, let's just start from the beginning. My name is Marinette Landry Parkinson. I am a wife, mother, aunt, sister, daughter, a niece. I am all of that. I am a community activist. I work in the community. And I wasn't born here in Beaumont. I was born in Riverside, California. My dad was a Marine.
That's right.
So you know, uh, I always got to strap my boots up, right? So I'm here for, and I, I also worked for BISD. I am the STEM coordinator for BISD. That was a recent promotion I received. And so I'm grateful for that. I also believe that in every community, there's work to be done. In every nation, there are wounds to heal. And in every heart, there's the power to do it. And in my heart, I have the power to do it. And I have the willpower and I have strategies to do it. That's who I am.
Amen.
I am a member of New Hope Delivers Ministries. I could go all with everything that I do. And I know we don't have all the time to make, to take care of that. But I, I am a leader in my church. Um, I am assistant pastor to my husband. Uh, we have three beautiful daughters, as well as we are raising our wonderful, God bless nephews. I've been, we've been having them for 10 years. They're 10, 11, and eight.
You have a full house, don't you?
I have a full house.
Yeah.
But my daughters are grown and they moved out. And they started their own families.
Okay. Really? Well, who's those little fellas I see you with sometimes?
That's, that's my nephews. That's my boys.
Oh, I thought it was your kids.
They are my kids.
Okay.
Beautiful, 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 God bless boys. They are, they my kids.
They're great.
Tony, you guys keep up. Those are her nephews.
Okay. You're welcome. You know, I'm always on a late train. But just tell us a little bit, what, what made you, now you're a teacher. And you've been in the school district for how long now?
It's five, five years. I, I just looked at it today, actually. It might be six years. And now you're a D, yeah.
Right.
Might be six years altogether would be ISD. Now however, I was an educator before I entered BISD.
Yeah. So what, 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 now that you've been teaching and you, you've been in the school district, I think one year, a year before, or two years ago, you was Teacher of the Year?
Yes, I was. I was, um, BISD Teacher of the Year 2018. Yes, sir. And I was also Texas A&amp;M Club Teacher of the Year 2019. And I was also Lamar, Lamar Epsy Teacher of the Year. That was last year. And I was also the Veterans of Warfare Second Place Teacher of the Year last year.
All right.
Now tell us a little bit about your actual platform and what you're running for. And why do you think you're the best candidate? That's what we really want to know.
My platform, I basically, I chose infrastructure, drainage, and community development. Because if you think about those three subjects, if you think about those three items by themselves, infrastructure is huge in Jefferson County, not alone just the city, but Jefferson County. And we have to learn how to work together in order to get our infrastructure and drainage under control. And I'm talking mostly with that stormwater drainage. And I believe that with my STEM background, STEM means science, technology, engineering, and math. I, I, I bring a different perspective to the table when it comes to dealing with other engineers in the field. And we want to make sure that everyone, every one of our constituents are safe to travel down our county roads. And community development goes in. If your infrastructure and your drainage is not functioning properly, how can we talk about community development and introducing economic development in the process? And so we want to be able to hardcore work on that infrastructure, work on that drainage concerning our road and bridges in the county.
Gotcha. Now, when you say infrastructure and community development, and what was your last point that you wanted to focus on? Drainage, okay. Infrastructure and community development. We want to know, like, when you say infrastructure drain is community development, are we talking about economically bringing businesses to the city? Or are we talking about building new buildings or housing? Or what are we talking about?
It, it goes first, we want to address, is it beneficial? If we're gonna build something brand new, is it beneficial for our county or our city? Is it beneficial to us? And then we want to assess the budget and make sure that when they're bringing in their business ideas, will they uphold their bargain? Because we don't want it to fall back down on us and that we have to supply and make sure everything is met. Now, infrastructure, because I'm gonna be dealing with the county roads and the bridges with the maintenance, the drainage, and construction. We want to make sure, make sure that we bringing in the best. We want to make sure that we're bringing in the best and dealing with that drainage issue in order to sustain either housing development, in order to sustain businesses. Because we don't want everyone that comes this way to get flooded out. You know, we already know our area. And that's a huge issue with flood mitigation. And so we want to make sure that we nip some of this stuff in the bud right now. And so the, the thing is strategizing, coming together as a unit, bringing our heads and collaborating with each other to resolve this issue and to make our county that spotlight again.
Right. So you, what made you decide, what made you decide to, to, to run for, for County Commission Precinct One? What, 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 what put that needle in you and say, okay, this is it. This is what I want to run. This is what I want to do. Because I know you ran two years ago. That was an experience, wasn't it?
Yes, it was. It was a wonderful experience. And I believe that anyone that wants to run for a public elected office, you, you, you have to start with help first. You have to start helping another person's campaign. And once I helped, I said, let me step in and, and let me do this for myself and see what it's all about. And what put that, that, that driving force is, I have a passion or a ministry of helps. I have that ministry deep down in me. And, and, and it's to help within the community, is to help bring my brothers and sisters up. And that's what it's about. And I want to make sure that when my message is out there, that they understand that we have to be all-inclusive. We have to be diversified when we're talking about our brothers and sisters. And I want to make sure that everyone understands that it's not just about the color of your skin. When I'm talking about my, my, uh, community or my constituents, or me running for this, this, uh, County Commissioner, Precinct One. It's not about that. It's more than that. It, it, it is about me helping. And so I could go back to my introduction. My mom, she ran for county, not county, city, when we had the youth rescue mission. So me showing up, I've been here in the background helping everyone. I've been here moving stealthily, doing what I had to do. And with that ministry of help, that seed was planted on the inside of me so that I can eventually stand up on my own two feet and to say that I am here and I am ready to serve in a greater capacity.
Well, I, I wish you all the blessings and all the luck, what you're doing, because you've got the energy, you've got the drive, you've got to talk. Uh, but it takes a little bit more. Uh, and, and that is learning, making sure that you learned the job. What the job is, what a, what a County Commissioner does. And that is the most important thing that, that I feel like you need to make sure that you got that handled. So, um, so what is, Donna, did you want to say something?
Well, I was, but go ahead. You got it.
Are you sure? Now I'll let you go.
I was gonna say, you know, when we say right-in, I know that we saying right-in candidate. Some people may not understand what a right-in means. And we need to kind of, you know, first things first, this is knowledge is power. We need to break down
How it is?
the layperson, what does it mean to be a right-in candidate?
Right.
I have a simple question. What does it mean to be a right-in candidate? Why are you a right-in candidate? And what do they need to do because you are a right-in candidate?
Okay, a right-in candidate is someone that you are actually going to physically, whether you have that paper ballot in your hand, you are going to look for the Jefferson County Commissioner, Precinct One. You're gonna bubble in, write in. And then you're gonna actually write in Mary. And I actually have a video of that showing you exactly how to do that.
Where can they find the video? Wait, hold up, stop. Where can they find the video? Is there a website that we should scroll across the screen? Maybe we can show them a place to go and find the video.
Yes, and also I've been posting on all my social media, this QR code. This QR code, if you scan it, it will open up a digital push card. And on that digital push card, it gives you my website address. It gives you the link to the video to show you how to do a right-in candidate. Because even when you go to the polls, you have to look for the Jefferson County Commissioner, Precinct One, you're gonna find my opponent, and you're gonna find right-in underneath my opponent. You're gonna click on right-in, and then you're gonna actually type touchscreen Mary, M-A-R-I. And also, you have to make sure that you understand that being a right-in does not make me less than. I'm qualified and it doesn't make me less than. I might have done it unorthodox, or this might not be the traditional route. Saying that some people say you should have did it at the very beginning. And when you have your children that you have to raise, you know, money is a shortage. And you're helping your girls in different states. And so I had to take priorities and I did it the best way for me.
Let me ask you. Tell us slowly the website where we can find the video. Tell me slowly. Is it a W, W dot?
It's my Facebook, at Right-In Mary. If you, if you, if you're on Facebook, all you have to do is Right-In Mary, at Right-In Mary. Later on tonight, we are supposed to be attaching it to the website. The website is www.marinettelandryparkerson.com.
Okay. Okay. So the website is going to be www.marinettelandryparkerson.com. So when they go there later on tonight or tomorrow, when they're just searching for the right-in candidate, Mary, that will give them a one, a video on what right-in candidate is about, what your platform is, and what they need to do on their ballot to make sure that they write in M-A-R-I on the ballot. Is that correct? Am I understanding you? Okay. Now let me ask you this. Um, with, with it being a right-in candidate, does, is that gonna affect my vote? Or will it go through normally like a normal vote would?
It's not gonna affect your vote. And that's the fear most people have, that it's gonna affect their vote. But it's not gonna affect their vote. And so you go in there and you vote with confidence that you are voting for me. And that's what I have to get that message out. Vote with confidence because that is your voice. Don't let no one steal your voice. We have let people steal our voice long enough. And it is time for us to arise and do what we have to do within the community to cause this community to flourish like never before. It will not subtract from your vote.
Okay.
We gotta keep the show going. I'll be right back.
Okay. So I have another question as far as you being a right-in candidate. And what, what can your constituents look for or from to gain from you as a person by, by being their, their next commissioner?
Well, what you can look for, and most people tell you is that I am a go-getter. I work hard. I, if, if I am committed to a cause, I bring 150% to the table. Not 100%, not 110%. Because I want them to know you're getting all of me. You even get my family too. So I, I, you, you get all of us together, working in this community to make sure that we give everything, everything. And even in, even in my schoolwork, I give everything because I want my students to know that even if you cross that stage and you graduate, Ms. Parkinson is still here, your cheerleader. I will be this county's biggest cheerleader.
And so let me ask you, something that's really big and important right now is integrity and honesty. I mean, we're looking for somebody that's going to tell it to us straight and not sugarcoat things and not lead us down a path and we, and then drop the ball somewhere. I mean, we, we want a candidate that has a bunch of integrity and honesty and accessibility. And are you gonna be available? You know, we want to know what, what are we getting with this vote?
You're getting all of those. As a matter of fact, you're gonna be sick of me because I'm so accessible. You're gonna be sick of me. And so, um, integrity is huge and honesty. I don't like to sugarcoat things. I just, I'm, I'm the type of person, if there's an issue, tell me the issue. Let's look at this. Let's evaluate what is going on and let's resolve this issue to the best of our ability. And so that's the person you're getting. And I'm not a sugarcoater. I try not to be because I, I want everyone to tell the truth. I want everyone to be truthful to me. So when, when you see me and you say, well, Ms. Parkinson, that was good. Ms. Parkinson, that wasn't, so let's, let's adjust it. Let's fix it. And so honesty, I bring honesty to the table. I am who I am. And I'm gonna tell you right now, my work ethic precedes me in the community. My integrity precedes me in the community. My honesty precedes me in the community. You know what you are getting. I am a diligent worker in the vineyard. I am a diligent worker.
Let me ask you this. Some of us may be unknowledgeable about what commissioners do. What, what is the job of commissioners? What do you guys handle? What is a typical commissioner do concerning the county? Like what type of issues come before commissioners? And, and give us a breakdown of the job that you will be handling. What type of activities are you gonna be responsible for dealing with?
And so a commissioner, our jobs, we are administrative arm of the state of Texas. We are that administrative branch. And so we handle, like I told you, the road and bridges, the construction, we oversee the construction, the maintenance, and the drainage. We also, with the community development, We also, with the community development, we also do the plating of the land. And some people call it the track of the land. And so we go in and we look at that. And also we do, uh, we also maintain all public street signs and warning lights on the county road. And we also do the culverts. Most people don't know what a covert is. So the covert, let me see if I can ex- uh, yeah.
No, we can, we can look it up on Covert. Okay, let me ask you. So in addition to roads, bridges, infrastructure, community development, you handle street signs, you do culverts, you do the planning of the land. Um, or i- is this a, is this a, is this a policing agency? Do you police other branches of the county? Do you guys, is there any court or different things like?
Commissioners court. The commissioners court is where we all actually come together. And say, for instance, there's an issue in one of the precincts. They bring that issue before the commissioners court. It's not judiciary.
Okay, it's a non judiciary branch. Okay, that's what I want you to tell me. Tell me all about it, girl. Break you down.
It's administrative. And so administrative, we're overseeing, we're overseeing the county's business.
Do you guys make judgments or assumptions on things? Or you, or you, or your justice rulings final? Can they be, uh, appealed? I mean, tell me about, tell me what happens at commissioners court then?
Well, when we get together, I'm talking like I'm now, when we get together, we actually hear and we each have one vote. Whether we're gonna vote for an issue or whether we're gonna vote against an issue. And that plays a lot with how the commissioners court is set up. And you wanna make sure you have enough people to persuade your vote to the left or to the right.
Oh, oh, on what type of issues though? Give me an example, like for an example, uh, uh, on drainage issues? Or on the bridge issues?
Plating, yes.
Zoning issues or what are we voting on when we go to commissioners court? That's what I'm trying to get to.
The zoning issues or whether to purchase certain items for the county, not the city, the county.
Right, the whole county, that's what I'm trying to figure out.
Yeah, whether the county should purchase certain items. Say for instance, I'm just gonna throw this out there. I don't know all the inner workings yet, Ford Park. So should the county purchase Ford Park?
Right.
Should the county not purchase? And so that's in a different precinct. It's not in precinct one, that's in a different precinct. And so what you would do is you would come together and vote on it. And remember, each commissioner gets one vote.
E- even if it's outside of your precinct? Even if it's outside of your precinct, do you vote on other person's precinct's issues?
Yes, that's how it is, yes. That, when there's issues that we cannot resolve, if say somebody wanna come in and do a subdivision in my precinct, I'll say no. That person can go to the commissioners court and they hear their plan and maybe.
Can vote on what's gonna happen in your precinct. Okay, give us an update, girl. Give us an update. Talk to us like we don't know nothing, cuz this is what we're here to do. Gain information, that's what this whole podcast is about, knowledge is power. We need to know what we're voting on, how these issues will be addressed and what your stance is. So we can know why we're voting for you, girl. I need to know. We need to be updated, honey.
Yeah, and, and, and I also, I also wanna let you know that I believe in representation. And so when you look around in government or especially in, in Jefferson County, and I looked around and I said, there was no representation. And I'm, and I'm not talking about a color of a skin. I'm talking about female. There was no, and, and they keep, everybody wanna tell you that it's a man's job. It's not a man's job.
Right.
It's not a man's job, especially.
So give us an update, will you be the first female county commissioner of Jefferson County? Girl, you gotta tell us these things. We don't know.
Most, yes, I would be, I would be the first female county commissioner.
In Jefferson County? In how many years? In the entire history of Jefferson County and last fifty years, forever? How long?
I think it's forever. I believe it's for the first one period.
In the history?
In the history of Jefferson County.
Okay, girl, go ahead. We need to know that.
The first one ever elected, yes ma'am. First one, the first one ever elected. I would count that an honor.
I, I, I never thought about that. I never thought about that. You will be the first, um, African American, um, I think, and, and a female to Jefferson.
And a female, yes.
So let's, let's go back over here because I had my IT guy come in here. He just come in for football practice. And, uh, and I said, I brought him in here, that's why I had to get behind the screen here. And I want to make sure that people understand what you are. You a, you are a commissioner, uh, candidate for commissioner precinct one. But you are, you write in, so you are not on the ballot. You have to write your name on the ballot. But guess what? I have a surprise for you. You ready?
What?
Everybody ready? Watch, okay.
Hello, my name is Marinette Landry Parkinson. And I would like to represent you as the next Jefferson County Commissioner of Precinct One. Therefore, I'm asking that you would write my name on the ballot. That's M A R I, Mary on your ballot. And on today, I'm gonna present to you a video on how to do that exactly. However, if you're going to do a mail in ballot where you have the physical ballot in your hand, you are going to look for the section that says Jefferson County Commissioner Precinct One. And you're gonna bubble in, write in, and then you're gonna actually physically write in Mary, M A R I, on your ballot. Now, concerning going to the polling station, this video is going to cover that. And in the video, I, I want you to pay careful attention to how you are going to do that. It's not difficult.
Recently, we were asked, how do you vote for a write in candidate on the touchscreen? In Chicago, this is a demonstration ballot. So you see candidates like Abraham Lincoln and Everett McKinley Dirksen and Harold Washington. So let's say I'm voting and I wanna make my selection for president, Abraham Lincoln. I touch the screen and the X appears. For US representative, I look at the candidates and I wanna vote for Harold Washington. But let's say for US senator, I wanna vote for a write in candidate. In this case, you simply touch the write in space and a keyboard appears. Now I type in the name of the write in candidate I wanna vote for. When I've typed in the full name of John Doe, I hit okay. And now it has stored it. And next on the review screen, you'll see my selections for Abraham Lincoln, John Doe, and Harold Washington all appear.
Thank you for tuning in. Hopefully that video cleared up any concerns or confusion you had concerning a write in candidate. That's M A R I, Mary. Once again, please continue to share, like the digital card, the video, so that we could get the information.
Information on a write in candidate.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, it's so good. I'm so proud of you, Tony.
Hey, I'm there.
And your IT guy.
I just don't understand. I have a six-five, two-hundred-and-eighty-pound, seventeen-year-old IT engineer. Yes, and I said, hey, son, hey. Okay, can we flip this? Can I get this? Can I, you put this on here real quick? We got it. All right. So now, now ask me to do it again, I cannot.
That was wonderful and I thank you for sharing it. Thank you so very much.
Uh, but, uh, let's get back to what, where we're actually still on what we were talking about. But I am so proud of you to have the, 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 the courage. You know, it takes courage to do what you're doing. And, 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 and not, not only that, it's double courage because you are a female. And it's a triple, uh, 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 courage because you not only a female and you're ready for candidate, but you're an African American female. That is, that is, that is awesome. And I, I, I want to make sure that people get to know who you are. And we're gonna support you, we're gonna support you and that you are a write in. And people, if you have any questions about the write in, now you know. Uh, we're gonna be, I'm, I'm gonna be sharing that, uh, that video on, um, um, Knowledge is Power podcast page.
Thank you.
That, you know, folks need to go and understand how to write in a candidate you can. So with that, uh, let's go on and let's move on to more, uh, of Mary Lan- Marinette Landry Parkinson, candidate for county commissioner precinct one.
Yes.
Write in, um, ma- yeah. Tell me about, um, uh, who you're running against.
Well, all I know is his name, Vernon Pierce, and he worked for Energy for thirty years.
Oh, okay. I have, you know, I haven't seen anything about this person.
I haven't either.
Well, that's unfortunate. I mean.
Well, that's true.
In the community?
Yeah, I, I.
Well, gosh.
Yeah, so we're going to push this and it's gonna be rare, but we're gonna push it. And, uh, so let me ask this question. So what if you get it that the candidate doesn't get fifty percent of the votes? Is there a runoff? And if it's a runoff, would you be now on the ballot?
I would now be on the ballot if there is a runoff, but there shouldn't be a runoff.
Okay, that's what I, that was a question I had because I.
Because if we push this hard enough, we should be able to win this with no problem, really.
No problem.
Yeah, because.
By Jefferson County having the, uh, you know, socioeconomic status that it does, then we should be able to come together as a group and get behind our candidates and get them into office with no problems. If we put our vote in, if.
If.
Vote like our life depends on.
So the reason why you're, uh, uh, a write in is because you, you missed the deadline.
Yes, sir.
To, okay.
The financial deadline, yes, sir, the financial deadline, yes, sir, missed it. I had other pressing issues that I had to take care of and.
And I, I would, I would argue that finances should have no bearing on whether or not a candidate is on the ballot or not. I know that we're not really in charge of all of the rules, but your finances has nothing to do with your ability to be.
But if we went out, if we went out and voted and have you sold me on your platform? And if we went out and voted and we all go out and got out and voted like we should have voted this November, you should, you should have a seat at the table.
Yes, and a seat at the table, you already know, a seat at the table, I'm bringing, I'm bringing you with me. I'm bringing you with me. You're, you're, I'm that concerned about our community. I'm concerned about our community. I, I can, I'm concerned about my future because my future is here. I'm not leaving Jefferson County. And so I wanna make sure that our future is solid.
One question.
Yeah.
What, what precinct, what, what area does precinct one cover? What, what, what area are we representing here with Commissioner Precinct One? What area does, what, what does that mean?
Okay, precinct one represents, uh, seven-seven-oh-six, oh-seven, oh-eight, thirteen, seven-seven-seven, thirteen, uh, China, No, Beverly Oaks. And quarter-seven-seven-oh-two, ending at Calder.
Okay, that's what we need to know. What are we servicing? What are we representing? What's going, you know, you got, girl, you gotta break it down for us, girl.
And so, yes, that, that, that would be my precinct. And not only that, a better way to even know what precinct you are is get your voter registration card. And your voter registration card tell you exactly what precinct you are a part of with no confusion. But once again, I'm the seventh.
One more time, yeah.
Yeah, one more time, zip codes.
Seven-seven, seven-seven-seven-zero-two, oh-six, oh-seven, oh-eight, thirteen, China, No, Beverly Oaks.
That's me. I'm even in there too, girl. I'm trying to say, that's me. I'm in oh-eight.
Well.
That entire area, and I, and I wanna admonish the people to get up and early vote. Get up and early vote. And if you're gonna do a mail in ballot, uh, Jefferson County, the court, Jefferson County Carolyn Gudris office is gonna have a drive-through. If you have that physical mail-in ballot, they're gonna actually have drive-through during early voting and election day so that you can just drop your ballot off if you don't go to a polling station, as well as the sub courthouse in Port Arthur on Lakeshore Drive.
Let's repeat that. If during early voting, if you have a ballot, you don't have to mail it, you could drive through and drop it off? Am I understanding you correctly?
Exactly, exactly.
Oh, yeah, girl.
Exactly, so they doing a mail, they, they doing a drive-through. The only thing, when you dropping off your mail-in ballot, you must show your ID.
Okay.
You can't take like your neighbors with you. So if you're gonna take your neighbors.
It has to be your ballot.
It has to be your ballot, exactly. Has to be your ballot. And so we wanna make sure that we're pushing it because before I ran for any office, I am a deputized voter registrar. And I, I, I believe in taking part of the democracy. This is one part of the democracy where they can't tell you what to do. And so we need to make sure that we're getting those high school students registered to vote, those college students registered to vote, because that is a huge part of our community. And we wanna make sure that they really take shape, concern. It's their voice that's gonna shape this democracy.
And I know this is off color, but I think that people take the presidential election and vote every four years. But they don't realize that the people that are elected or appointed under that president for those four years matter. Since Donald Trump has taken office in these four years, Donald Trump has appointed a hundred and ninety-eight judges, two district judges and appellate judges and different judge seats. Those judges are going to live out their life on those benches. So it's not about just the four-year voting. It's about the people that are putting in position to shape the future of America. We have to take into consideration the amount of judges that Donald Trump has put into office in four years. A hundred and ninety-eight of them, not one of them is African American. Do you guys remember? Not one judge in a hundred and ninety-eight is African American, not one. This county commissioner precinct seat matters. This was gonna be a sweep. This lady is a write in candidate because she didn't meet the financial requirements, but she is the better candidate for the job. But we gotta get behind her. We can't sit on our hands and toot our thumbs. That's why you on this show. I'm proud to have you on here. I'm super excited that you're standing up for us. You represent, and you give a lot of young people like myself hope. This is what we need. We don't need people sitting back and waiting for somebody else to come and rescue us. The hood can save the hood. That's what we wanna do.
Uh-uh, uh-uh.
I like you.
I told my mom, and, um, and, um, I told my mom. We were standing in New York, uh, and I say, somebody need to do something. Somebody need to say something. And she turned, she turned to me and said, you the somebody.
Okay.
You the somebody. It's time for you to get up and take your rightful place. And so I, I, I want you to know, I am a diligent worker in the vineyard. I, that's why I love education. And not only that, being a commissioner, you have to evolve in this position. You, I mean, if you already come knowing everything, how you gonna evolve and how are you gonna help our constituents? When there is.
And we don't need the status quo. We don't need the, the, we don't need the, the machine to continue running the way that it's running. If we needed that, then we'd be looking at behind us and not in front of us. We don't wanna do what we've been doing.
Been doing.
So the definition of insanity is to keep doing what you always done and expect a different result. We can't keep doing what we've been doing and get a different result. We need to do something different.
And with, that's why we're pushing that vote. Get out and vote during early voting. Go ahead and vote today, early voting, just in case it rain. You, I, October thirteenth, I voted.
Let me just tell you, first of all, when it's gonna be election day, I'm gonna be in Hawaii. I'm not gonna be here, but I plan on working every day during early voting. Because I, if I do my job, if you early, let me tell you what my motto is at my job. I own a medical transportation company. And our motto at L and L Transport is, if you early, you can't be late, baby. So if you early, you cannot be late. I don't let them vote on voting day. It's impossible to be early and late at the same time. If you early, you can't be late.
And that's, and that's what we wanna, that's what we want everyone to know. That we need, well, I need, I need your vote.
You want it.
I need your vote. I want your vote. Yeah, I, I mean, there's no other way to say it. And not only that, I'm gonna thank you in advance for voting for me as the next Jefferson County Commissioner of Precinct One. And I just want you to know that I am accessible. I will be.
Accountable.
I will, I will be there no matter what. They, I'm serious. The people at the school already know. They already know. And not only that, I bring a different perspective with that. The people at the school already know, they already know. And not only that, I bring a different perspective with that STEM background, that science, technology, engineering, and math, and that make you very analytical.
Girl, tell us about you, girl, it's time to tune your old horn. And they don't know that you're a doctor. Tell us about your, I mean, you gotta give us everything you got, baby, we want it.
I'm gonna give you everything I got. Yes, I, I've been to school, when I graduated high school, I went to school and I stayed there. As a matter of fact, right when I graduated high school, or just before I graduated high school, I actually became a certified homeschool teacher, because we had the youth rescue mission, and some of them were dropouts. And Ms. Davis needed a teacher, and because I love learning, she brought me to Florida, because I wasn't old enough to go get a teacher certification, but I was old enough to get a home certification with a Becker program. And so I became the teacher at the youth rescue mission. And I helped out, then from there, I evolved, I did cosmetology, I did their fingernails. And so I love giving back. And from there, I went, got a accounting degree from Lamar University. So my first degree is in accounting from Lamar University.
So you can manage money, girl, tell us all about yourself, go ahead.
Some money, you, you go, they gonna be mad, but I can manage some money. And I, and I, and not only that, I think I wrote a few, few, few grants for our church, for FEMA, and I was able to depreciate all the assets, so I got that down. And, uh, I did my master's, uh, for school counseling and drug counseling at Prayer View. Then I went on, and I did another master's degree in theology, then I did another master's degree in mid-management, so learning how to manage resources, I've been doing that. And I, I know how to manage all the resources, especially managing the STEM lab for B I S D. I do that all by myself.
And one of the biggest things that I can see, that I can gather as a taxpaying citizen is, you consider yourself a life learner. And anything that isn't growing is dead. So let's just say this, you are a life learner that can turn around and teach the things that you're learning to other people. What can be more beautiful than that? You may be able to help the rest of the Commissioners become better. Better fit for the job, girl, I'm here for you. Let me help you motivate you, promote you.
And I, I am that life learner, and I do believe in teaching what I know. And because I want the people, I want everyone to know. That's why I do my little, uh, I, I want them to know, I want them to know. It, it is my mission, my passion, to teach you what I know, so that you'll be able to do that yourself. And you know how they always say, one reach one?
Right.
I got ten of me in, inside of me, I can reach more than one. And so.
And let me say this, another blessing is that i- i- in, in planning, a lot of times when failure happens, it's not because we planned to fail, we failed to plan. So if we had planning happening, then we would be better. And with you, I can see that you're gonna plan ahead, because in all those degrees and different wealth of knowledge that you have gained, you had to plan to gather though, that information in order to complete those schools and run your household and keep your kids. So guess what that tells me as a parent? You've been able to do time management, you've been able to be do- doing budgeting, you've been doing some planning, baby, you've been strategizing, baby, you have been doing it all, because you wouldn't be at this point had you not done the things that you have already done. This is how you have arrived at being prepared for this job. And that's what the people need to hear. They need to know that you're prepared, that you are innovative, that you have accountability, that you have stability, you've been doing this for years. So they don't have to look for another candidate, because you are all encompassing of what we need in a County Commissioner precinct. I, I, listen, I'm, I'm excited about you, girl.
I am too, I am too, and I just, I enjoy having you on the show tonight. You've put some excitement here, and my co-host, she really would fire up. She's taking over, just go take over, I'm just gonna stand back.
Well, you, when you take a little break, honey, you know.
I, you know, gives me enough time to go and be behind the scene, and, and, and to, to do the producing here. So that kind of hip out here. But I want to let you know, you must learn your competitor, you must learn your person that you're running against. You must know what this all about, and maybe we can, I can get, invite him, that Vernon Pierce, and you all back, and let's, let's have a, let's have a little forum. And let, you know, let's, let's hear you both platform against each other, I'm not against you, but I guess so. And let's find out who's the best candidate, so we can make a choice. But I, my vote is for you, my love, you got my vote. I mean, what, what this is all about, is all about, uh, putting the right person in place, and, and, and people. We, we want you to vote for, uh, Marinette Landry Parkinson. She's a write-in for the, uh, Jefferson County Commissioner of Precinct One. Tony Renfro say, vote for Marinette Landry Parkinson, please, Marinette Landry Parkinson, for Commissioner Precinct One. So write in, you must go there, you must write a name, M A R I.
That's it.
Why? Because it's time for change.
It's time for change.
Anybody that is following me, all of my young people, all my eighteen-to-thirty-five group, anybody that's confused, or don't know who they should vote for, I'm gonna have a push cord that I put on my page, people that are following me at Facebook Live or Instagram. I'm voting for Marinette, and you should vote with me, because I'm with her. That's the way we're gonna do it.
Don't forget, this QR code has all the information you need. This QR code, I told you, I'm an innovator. I use that ingenu- ingenuity to its fullest power, because this is my digital push cord, I knew I couldn't get to you physically. So if I see you in the store, and I say, scan this, scan it, because it's gonna give you all the information you need concerning me and my bid for this County Commissioner of Precinct One.
Great, Marinette, and would you please go to, also on Knowledge is Power Podcast Live, there's a comment section. You can visit with your, your, uh, uh, the viewers that made comments, uh, uh, wrote in comments and asking questions. Go back and, uh, answer those questions for them, and help them, done, uh, help them better, uh, about with your information and your platform. And it would be very, very helpful, uh, to them and everyone else. And people, if you're watching Knowledge is Power Podcast Live on Facebook, uh, and YouTube, uh, please, share it, share with your friends, family, friends, family, friends, family, family, family. Uh, nephews, uncles, and everybody, uh, please share, because these are, this is informative information. And we're going into one of the most important elections in our history. And, um, we need you to vote, and we're gonna vote early, we want you to vote soon, early voting, we're gonna, jam up, we're gonna jam up, uh, early voting.
Early voting.
Early voting. And we're gonna vote also locally, uh, for our, our candidates. And, uh, uh, and please, again, Marinette is, I know Marinette, I knew her, I knew her parents, uh, we, her dad and I, we grew up together, I, I'm not as old as he, you know, I was real old, he was about sixteen, seventeen.
He's a young man, he's.
About this kid, but, uh, we, uh, um, um, but she come from good people, good family. Um, and her mother, uh, is a, a worker, she's, she's a fighter, she's helping the, the needy, the, the, uh, um, uh, she's just doing so much, the homelessness, uh, food banks, and she's doing them all, she's doing it all. And, and so she come from, she has good DNA in her. And, uh, matter of fact, Marinette and I, we met, uh, two years ago, when we were both running for the same office. And we, and like we said earlier, it was a, it was a very expensive, uh, learning experience, but we learn, you know? And I promised after that election that I say, you know what, I'm gonna be an activist, I'm gonna be an advocate, I'm gonna do everything I can to push someone else in the right, in position to, to, to make a difference in, in Beaumont, Texas, in Jefferson County. And that's what my job is to do right now, he, is to push you and make you out there, get you out there. So, uh, and now with that, let, let, uh, Marinette, uh, I, like I always promise, I'm gonna have a candidate, that local candidate that's running, uh, for, um, elec- running in this, this election. Uh, every Tuesday evening, uh, at eight o'clock, we're gonna have each, and everyone that's running locally, so that we can, um, uh, get our candidates out, out front. And, uh, and we're gonna make sure, be, be, like, be gonna be transparent about what we doing, and make sure that we get our people in places. Uh, uh, but with that said, uh, Marinette, please go to the, uh, Power, uh, Knowledge is Power Podcast Live, and, uh, uh, answer some of the questions on, on your, on the comment box, so that you can make sure that they know what your, your platform is, and, and answer their questions, and they'll be right. So again, people, uh, catch us next Sunday at seven o'clock, where we're gonna have a Get Out to Vote, um, podcast, with the, uh, Jefferson County, uh, Democratic, uh, Party here, uh, along with, uh, quite a few guests, that we're gonna be out helping, giving information out on how to vote, when to vote, and how we gonna do it. So with that said, uh, Marinette, God bless, thank you so much, everybody. And please, tag John, uh, yeah, Marinette, show it up there, I showed the screen up, there we go. You see it, write-in candidate, Mary, M A R I, that's right, we're gonna do that, we're gonna, we're, we're gonna do that. We gotta do that, so. You got any final word that, that, LaDonna, you have anything to say?
No, I think that tonight was a beautiful show, and I am looking forward to all of our candidates coming on, and I can't express enough my enthusiasm for getting out the vote. And I think everybody should pick seven people, this is my challenge. Each person that is under the sound of my voice, find seven friends that you can follow up to the polls, and make sure that they vote. And if those seven can find seven, let's keep it going, because we are all we got, baby. And if we don't do it, nobody else will. I am super excited about this candidate series, I am super excited to co-host with Tony Renfro, and knowledge is power.
God bless, thank you, guys, let's go out and vote, people.
Yes, M A R I, Mary.